Let's say the Pledge of Allegiance in the East Star case. I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, America, in the name of liberty and justice for all. You can't shake the speed.
I didn't hear that.
I said I'm moving here.
Good God, is it ten after? Can't be. I got four after.
Just said the Pledge of Allegiance in the West.
Okay.
So you have a reading list in there.
Okay. I have just the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you guys have any discussions in the applications?
Not yet. Are these the extra ones we just got? Should have four, I believe, correct?
Five.
Five.
Actually, one repeat.
Yeah, the one from Paul seems to repeat. Robert Ribanelle.
Major is a repeat.
Yeah, and then Deanna Ordner, Mercedes Barto, and Jamie Cromwell. It means open for discussion.
Before we approved, I seen a reason to discard them both, which doesn't rest in John.
Which was?
The original four.
Chris Smith and...
Shelley Camp?
Yeah.
Meyer.
I'm just not.
That weren't interested in moving, but didn't want to speak with the council.
Who's that?
The two females.
Barto and Smith. All these, Smith and Shelley Camp.
What did anybody take to the new, the four new, the four new, right?
Five. Well, one repeat, four new, and one Paul seems to repeat.
I guess had the hope, the question we had before, Linda Ross, that worked according about telephone, indicated that she might actually move to Wally.
Which one was that?
Note to consider, Linda Ross, that was in that first batch.
She's been tied to Wally and lived in Wally.
Yeah, that's in that island daughter.
I would say Corinne's daughter.
Yeah, Corinne. I don't know if she'd interview her, if she's going to live in Wally, I'll see.
Not unless she has an old packet.
She worked at Cornell for a while.
Rod, do you need coffee?
That's up Linda Ross.
We had her ask who she was.
Interview one was Shelley Camp.
Carol, do you have one?
Yeah, I've got one. And Thomas Meyer and George, Chris Radman, Patricia Smith. Patricia Smith and Shelley Camp don't want to move to Wally, right?
Well, I heard Shelley Camp probably won't move.
No, she listed Patricia Smith, then went to Wally.
And she said they would still like to speak to us, but then, I don't know.
They want to interview with her on her list.
None of these four, the new ones, really jumped out at me as a...
There's no more than two until May or February.
Yeah.
That's up Mercedes Barto.
Here for Storm Lake. Oh, that's where she works. That street from the Smith students. She goes to school, she's got a...
I've heard the name before.
She's around somewhere.
Is she from Auburn?
Auburn, no, I go to Auburn.
She lives in Wally country address.
I think she went to school, well, you know, it's a son of Auburn.
390th Street.
South.
Is it the car?
No, the first off, that'd be a mile before the county line, 390.
She has education, liberal arts, but I don't know what that means.
I mean, I know what liberal arts is, but... If it's in high school, that's what I mean.
Yeah, I don't know what that's...
Apparently, she must have her service, well, been due. Said apparently because she says she's interested in focus, means she looks like she is a person.
What about the guy in the crying voice, Mark Baker?
He's got qualifications.
He said he was, in his letter to me, he said that he had failed in the ocean. Same men are on now. That's the letter I got. What's that?
I said he worked for hosting for a couple of years, and I sat alongside Mary the other night, I thought, no, I would have asked her.
And she was up there, wasn't she?
And she would, I see, didn't put her down as a reference.
He did?
No.
I know he did.
She's been mayor for thirty years, I believe.
Oh.
Thirty years, I hope.
I don't think it's right that long.
I don't know how long, but the way she's been, she's a...
Councilman?
Councilman for one term, that's what she's been doing. Maybe it was, that said he was mayor of Chilwell.
Well, Michelle, have you, have you, have you looked through the applications?
Most recent set?
All of them.
The last few I haven't really done over the month, so.
No, but you've looked through them, right? And you know the job that we're asking somebody to do right off. Would you interview any of these people? Would you, I mean, would you seriously look at some of these people? Yeah, would you worry that? I really honestly don't want to waste my time interviewing somebody I know I'm not going to hire.
I agree.
So you're going to ask me to come in here and interview people? I just don't have time unless I'm serious about hiring them. Which means I have to eliminate every single one of them, just so you know my opinion. Now, what's your opinion, you've looked through them?
I believe that, in agreeance with you, that we need somebody with accounting, and I don't see anybody, any packet, that has that background.
But then I have a real tough question for you. I don't know your qualifications at all. Don't know, but what you've done is poor, I never saw your application, I'm hired for a job, and I didn't know if it was... I think we, I don't know, we've been a while, but... How does your qualifications stack up with these?
I have a four-year business admin degree. I do not have the extensive background in accounting, but in business, I do.
Why didn't you apply for this job?
Because I'm not interested in doing the clerketing position, the minutes, the abatements, the back end of it, I'm not interested in. I enjoy greeting customers and dealing with customers, doing the knowing, researching issues. To do the IFRS report every month, somebody else could do, I'd rather somebody else do that position. General ledger entries, I'm sure that's something I could learn. It's my accounting book at home, I can bring it in, but I don't know that that would be the best use of my time, spending away from textbooks. If we could find somebody that can do the position, then I'd like to see somebody in there that can do it. I have heard good things about Linda Ross. I wasn't sure why she got program approval. I don't know any of the others.
Well, I threw up because she lives in Wally city, but honest, I heard today that they might actually move her to Corinne.
I have to say that. As far as the prior packet, I don't see any reason why not bring those who are qualified as far as education on. But there's a lot to do in this whole work that somebody's going to have to come in and get, the budget needs to be run. We've got some things that we've got to get moved on. I know right now from what it looks like, anybody you pick from that packet, except for maybe Mr. Baker, you would have to send to school right away, instead of three years, getting his course. That's true, forget about it.
John Meyer?
Yeah.
These boys will be...
Takes three years for that?
Maybe they might be able to go for two. You may be able to go for two, I don't know.
Yeah.
To look at it, then, in his work experience, he was making bars for a while too, right?
Those Patricia Smith, why do you pick them?
Guess she was one of the few that had any type of...
I don't see any education, educational association or anything.
You said all accountants that companies, small businesses, kind of, associate. The, you know, so they probably do what they want.
Just say, you're saying basically whoever we pick here is not needed, they classed, understand it anyway. How many do you think it takes a person to get settled in by six months? If they didn't have a lot of experience at it?
At least. If that's, if they're only bringing, yeah, if they're only bringing one end of it, you know, if...
Sidney Primber's been looking for how long?
Six months.
They haven't found him, but you have it.
Possibly.
Sidney Primber hasn't been looking for six months, really. You know, I don't think it's a real bad idea for us to get someone in and train them.
I agree with John, he'll be one of the top of the...
I haven't seen shining stars here, but...
Yes, the ones you talk to might be different.
Well, Mark Baker, if he's applied twice, maybe he's... But you said he had the reference of the mayor?
No, he didn't have the reference of the mayor, I see he worked there since, what was it?
Oh, five.
Oh, five to ten, somewhere, so June of, June of, of line of steer, I mean, I know she didn't have the reference of the mayor, but...
But his education is not in town. Andrew Horson, community, he's a planer. I imagine that's planer, neither little crap about the county.
But he tends to move a lot.
Yeah, he does, he does tend to. We got Chris Rudd, and we never really mentioned him.
Well, you know, one thing about Chris is Peter Plank here in Wally, he wouldn't go and go anywhere.
I mean, he put the timeline that necessary to put in.
Yeah.
He used to take care of all the rebates, different manufacturers and stuff like that, so he, you know, I'm not... I don't know what he's, how good his accounting skills would be, but I know he did some accounting out there.
He didn't put down his degree at Mankato. He's at the University of Mankato.
Why don't we let him?
I don't think he did.
No. I can meet him. He's really, really good in finishing.
He's two years.
I don't know, it's a really tough choice to interview when you just can't find one thing.
It really just sticks out.
Yeah.
Whoever we picked, probably about that, or whatever, I'm like, I know it's going to take a while before they...
It's going to take some time, all right, just...
Before they...
I want some of that, you know, if we go up to these people like...
That they're not going to score.
Afraid they are going to be gone in about six months if they find another opportunity. Especially the ones that come from life communities.
Just be a stepping stone.
Yeah, because I'm just afraid they're not going to stick around.
At least you knew somebody.
I thought so. I mean, he's not a great guy, I know.
There's a lot of demand, especially not the great guy.
Good question. I have a nice loan around the housing, regional housing authority, but I can tell you from experience, a lot of them are not real. You don't have to be real confident. Oh, I guess I can watch TV. I just...
He's from Nashville.
I just lost another call. I want to meet some cities, but I don't know.
I think you stay at the first one we had, horrified June to Linda.
Well, I think we should ask Linda. I don't see any Patricia Smith or Shelley Camp, unless you think we should.
I understand that they want to come talk to us, but they don't have a boot here, I don't think.
I hate to say they can't somebody, but they don't have a pay in our taxes.
Yeah.
Been there, done that.
Yeah.
You think they need that Thomas Meyer in the works?
From Clear Lake?
I think that's, I think that's two or three.
That the most?
I'd be a little skeptical of Linda Ross, because they just bought their house up there, and a ton of money in it.
You're not after her, you don't mean to ask her?
I mean, if you hired her, she said she's going to move. I don't know what you do.
I do think we should, I'd do at least two or maybe three of them.
Well, I'm almost a few, I think, we could get maybe somebody.
Well, Thomas Meyer, we've got him in there because he's got a BA degree in business, head of business account. Chris Rodman, we have him in there because there's a number of people in this council that absolutely believe in Chris Rodman.
And there'd be twenty-two.
Yeah, as far as anybody else.
Well, you want to start with those two? Set an interview date?
We could always bring more in. I mean, we have the... The apps, you know.
When is a good time to interview? Nights or days? I guess I'm pretty open. John, I know this is your busy time.
Yeah, I don't know, I guess I'm going to have to, I'll have to try to look around.
The afternoon is better than mornings, or does it matter to anybody? One is better?
I guess, I guess we actually have to find out from the people we want to interview. It was good for them also. Because I'm sure that Thomas Meyer, he'll, he'll have to drive from Clear Lake.
I'm sure Chris will, I think, something pretty easily right out of this time of year.
Yeah, I'm sure Chris is pretty open.
What do you know about this Shelley Camp, anything? Like, trying to find her on Facebook or anything? You know what else? Think she'd be, yes or no, interview her? No, she was saying no. Well, she got a pretty good resume, that's what I was asking.
Her resume is, was okay, but she's not going to move, that's...
That's the problem. She can't say she wouldn't move.
Oh, she told us.
I talked to her. But she didn't, she did still want to talk to the council, but I said she's not going to move. Not workplace, do you know what I mean?
Well, I don't think they do it anytime, because of Brady.
Yeah, I know, Tyler Brady's... Tuesdays are bad days for me. What are we, what are we talking about, next week or two weeks or?
Sooner the better, I would say.
First, especially though.
Next week will be the first of March.
A lot of things start happening in April, May, June.
You're pretty open, aren't you, for any?
Yeah, right now, I mean, I got a lot of meetings in there, but I can work around those two, so.
The council on the twenty-eighth, maybe we could meet.
And I probably won't make that one. Yeah, he's going to have a little girl.
Oh, that's right.
He's going to have a little girl, Monday.
I might, you can't put...
It'll be there. I could probably be here. I could be here. I'd be greatly appreciated, but I could be here.
Roger that.
Maybe it really, probably a better place to be where I'll be.
I mean, how much notice do we have?
I'm sure Michelle had to get on the phone probably tomorrow, which is on Tuesday.
Chris probably wouldn't have much notice at all.
No, but the, uh, Thomas Meyer wouldn't.
His comment to me was a day or so. In the column. A day or so, no notice. But he said he was pretty flexible as well.
Afternoon work better?
Pardon?
He said afternoon work better?
I'm pretty flexible, morning or afternoon.
After Monday. Yeah, are you looking at Wednesday, Thursday this week, or are you looking at next, next week? I'm not quite a jam.
Let's look at next week, I tell maybe second or third.
Second or third?
Uh, we can't do it the second, we got that defensive driving.
First, there is. First, second, and third.
Ours is the second.
Yours is the second. Ours is going to be the first.
Well, Tuesdays is bad for Johnny, said. And that's the first.
Well, that's farmer deadline day. That's farmer deadline day.
We've got something up there. This third day, and our first, we've got all day deal up there.
Because we don't have four.
I think, I mean, the second's again.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's farmer crop day from Thursday.
So, the third work is the third day. Rob's been, you already...
Yeah. Oh, yeah, he's coming back for us.
Why don't you shoot for the third of March, Michelle, in the afternoon, some of Thursday's greats in the afternoons?
Yeah.
Thursday, yeah. A whole bit of time.
Oh, yeah, I guess. I think you should call Linda Ross and ask her if she's thinking about moving to town.
If there's no more business, you showed her a picture. Why did she leave cornball?
I don't know. She did, uh, show us, she's late.
Why did she leave? She did. She put very simple down. You want to talk to her too, I don't face it all. Move it, Jerry. Hi.